Funk, the assistant clerk took those and then Danielle's reviewing them. So we'll have. This meeting and the previous meeting that our next.
Very good.
Yes.
No worries. Just so we, just as long as you know where they are.
You have three?
Yes.
Alright. So for our consent agenda tonight, we have vouchers totaling forty-four thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars eighty cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding those vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve about the consent agenda of the vouchers as submitted. Councilman by moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're now into our first public comment section. Do we have any, I see no members of the public in person? Is there anybody online?
Yes, Phil was coming.
Hey, well, we will dispense with our first public comment opportunity and move directly into our department head. Annual report with Chief Jesse Hebert from the Hillsborough Police Department, and if you'll pull that podium out.
Is it okay if I don't use a podium, can I just stand here?
Well, I don't know if I feel safe with without that podium in between. That's fine.
If you're okay like this, cause.
Yeah.
I wanna be operating off that screen right there, so.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get used to your contrariness. At some point.
That's fine.
Proceed.
And you notice Randy's not here, so. Okay, I appreciate that, the chance to talk with you guys a little bit, so. What we're gonna do tonight is the first part of this, we're just gonna go over uh caseload and call load. Um, from January one of this year to um. June thirtieth, so basically half a year. And the Kansas standard offense reports, those are reports that um are filed with the county attorney's office for prosecution. They are different than a um service rendered report, which would be basically an investigation that's in house. Uh, the report stays in house. So if you look up here, this is, this is what we're dealing with in town, um, the first six months of this year. Um, service rendered reports, I mentioned the difference. Uh, anytime we do an investigation and that report doesn't go to the prosecutor's office. And it, it, there is still a report and we wanna document what went on and there would be body cam video or any sort of other surveillance video. Would go into that case file, those would be service rendered reports. So these are the uh. Reports that we dealt with for the first six months of the year, that suicidal. Uh, mental health is a big issue uh in our community, even just in Hillsborough, let alone. Nationwide, so uh, we're struggling there. Uh, a lot of those um. Not all of them are actual people trying to commit suicide. They've spoken of wanting to do it and we've intervened before anyone hurt themselves. Some of them have hurt themselves. Uh, none of them have succeeded. But those are the calls, uh, and that is what the calls called as we go there. The runaways basically uh kids that. That are supposed to be home that aren't home, and sometimes they are in other states. In fact, uh, this. One of those runaway reports is a juvenile that that ended up in Florida. So um theft reports, not all thefts, um, when the public calls in, not all thefts, do they want an official report? They might not want to get their name in the paper, or they might not want to. They just wanna let us know in case we see the item. So that's why you'll see a theft report up there, same with disturbances. Disturbances, if we do uh, and those are generally like we call them domestic violence disturbances, uh, those would be verbal. Uh, anytime there's physical contact in the state of Kansas, it's a mandatory arrest, so we have no. Decision whether or not to arrest on domestic violence battery. Those would be a couple of people arguing. Arguing to the point that either one of them called us, or the neighbor called us, or a citizen called us. We get there, determine there's no battery, get them separated, cool them down the best we can, and we're able to clear the scene without an arrest. Civil standbys usually happens post incident to an arrest on domestic disturbances, so. Uh, one party needs to get in there and get their property out of the house, uh, so we're there to make sure nothing else happens. More service rendered reports, um, couple death investigations. Um, outside agency assists, those would be uh DCF. Um, or any other agency that might have a suspect within our community, and we're assisting with that investigation. A damage to property again. Didn't warrant, they didn't want to have an official report, but warranted calling us and showing us what happened. Those drug cases um. If you look at that, it says including municipal court cases, we've started this year. Not running all drug cases through district court. We had up until this year ran everything drug. Through county court. We now have an option to issue municipal citation uh for possession of marijuana or paraphernalia. Uh, as long as it's uh first offense, and so we're using that now. When we deal with people that have a minute amount of marijuana or something like that. We'll run a few municipal court rather than making an arrest and taking them over the sheriff's office. Anytime, a, a lot of those drug cases are methamphetamine, so obviously that's mandatory uh. Jail ride, so. Uh, a little bit of information on the patrol log. I, I can tell you one thing about the citizens of Hillsborough, they have no problem calling the police when there's a dog at large. We do appreciate that. Uh, we struggle a little bit at times because we are not equipped for animal control. Um, we try to get them into a cage that transports a human, but if the dog's aggressive or whatever. You know, we, we gotta use a little common sense, so we don't get bit trying to put a dog in a little bitty cage to get it out to the vet. We take a lot of calls, a lot of calls. In fact, last press release, I think I put four in there on seven days. So, uh, we appreciate being called, especially if they're, they're violent, um, but. Um, there's a lot of dogs just roaming around. Civil standbys again. Uh, that would be just hanging out to make sure couples don't get at each other when they're taking their property and leaving the residence. Suspicious activity, I highly encourage those calls, cause a lot of times people will see something, they know it's not right. But they don't wanna get involved, and then later on we find out we had a burglary somewhere and someone. Saw it, could have prevented it if they gave us the nine one one, we could have stopped it. So I highly encourage any of those suspicious activities. Uh, traffic accident investigations were twenty in that first uh six months, stops, traffic stops. A hundred and four citations issued, which those do include the drug and dog. Uh, that's fifty-three and fifty-one warnings, so we're about fifty fifty when you get stopped. Um, whether or not you're gonna get a ticket. So. You don't write everyone a ticket, the numbers right there show me that. Alright, so that was, was there questions on any of that?
How does it compare to other years?
Uh, the, the traffic stop stuff?
Probably even your first page that you had, seeing the most, like what does that look like?
I think we're down a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, we're down a little bit. I mean, there were years, I think back to the beginning of my career. Uh, our caseload or case numbers right now would have been in the hundreds and were, I think, fifties or sixties, so.
Can you go back to that first page?
Yeah, please.
The um, the drug related cases, I, I, reading in the paper a lot about. Cases where you seem to be able to help and, and assist in, in some of these that uh they, the counties involved in and. And some of that, it doesn't seem to be just inside the city limits or hills.
Right, and I have a slide that I actually talk about that.
Okay.
Um, so I'll definitely be covering.
Okay.
So we've got a whole new ballgame.
Thank you.
Comes to work in drugs.
So this is down, since suicide, that suicide.
The suicide's up a little bit. Yeah, but as far as, I mean, I hate to take this, bring it up, uh, sex crimes used to be a lot higher. And decent liberties with minor cases were a lot higher. Um, I mean, we worked rapes in town. Uh, haven't had that quite a while. We've had some rape cases, but then through investigation. Or witness changing testimony, they've dissolved and haven't any of those, so. You know, the violent crime, as far as the domestic violence, that's still there. Uh, property crimes, I think actually look pretty good. The burglary and theft fifteen cases for six months. On a KSO, and I keep in mind, some of those were in service rendered, but that, that's not, I mean, in reality, that's not too bad, so. And some of those cases, so I'll just think of one, I just put in the press the other day. There, I hate to say this, crimes of opportunity for failure to secure your own property. So if you're leaving your vehicle unlocked, or your shed unlocked, or your garage door open at night. And we've got these people who might be using some of those drugs, walking up and down the street. Drugs takes money, they're unemployed, they get their money by selling things, they steal, they look in there, see something, they're gonna walk in and pillage. So, I mean, that's how that works. They go hand in hand.
Are you gonna talk some more about the mental health issues in your presentation?
No, I don't have anything, a slide covering that, but I will tell you that. Um, we've, our entire department, after a situation we had at the first of the year, um, which we spent. Almost three thousand dollars in overtime and extra officers to babysit someone out at the hospital. Why we waited for ten days, seven to ten days for a bed to open up at a state facility, that's the problem. There's no breakdown locally, there's really not a breakdown with Prairie View. Uh, the breakdown is the state hospital, they don't have people to work. They have the beds, but they don't have the, the staff to open all the beds, so they have half a facility. Uh, there's been hospitals that have been shut down. We have more people suffering for mental health, whether it's financial, whether it's uh substance related, or just. Uh, relationship failures, we have an increase of that and less places to go with them. And so that's why we end up having to babysit them, you know, and what ended up happening with this one out here, I'll be honest with you. Uh, it started out, there were some drugs involved and, and suicidal comments and things like that and. And obviously, we can't just turn that person loose, they end up becoming a ward of the state. We're not gonna just let that person who's, who's has violent tendencies stay at the hospital and hurt the hospital staff. So we took it upon ourselves to station an officer at the hospital and protect the hospital and the staff. While we wait for the state facility to say we got a place for him, bring him out. Now, in reality, when the state said we have a place for him, bring him out, she had detoxed and she was fine. But that's, that's how it works. We've been to classes on, you know, how to deal with them, how to de, you know, we, we diffuse a lot of these situations. But it's not, there is a training bridge that, that needs a little work. But the main issue is where do you go with the people? Law enforcement is not the resource for mental health. But we are forced to respond to it. When someone talks about committing suicide, they call the police. We get there, you know, we wanna make sure no one else is hurt, that's the first thing. We don't wanna get hurt, we don't wanna make them advance their decision to commit suicide by being there, so it's. A real dicey situation, so. I don't know if I beat that to death.
No, no, I, 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 I appreciate that and, and I guess the only thing I was gonna comment is. How is the working relationship with our local resources vis a vis Prairie View?
Excellent. Uh, I'm actually, I've started attending meetings uh in Newton, in fact, we have one this month. Where the CEO of Prairie View Newton and all the chiefs uh in four counties show up there, the sheriffs show up there. And we discuss these problems. Our problem that took place in January, March, whenever that happened, was discussed. They were very well aware of. And we talked about, in fact, everyone else was aware of it too, cause there were three departments dealing with it at the same time. Three departments in the state of Kansas were doing the same thing we were doing. Um, so they, they understand, and that's when she explained, hey, don't think it's us. In fact, Prairie View, there's been times I've called and they have sent a counselor to my location. Like to my address where I'm at, dealing with this person, to see if they can help. That's awesome that they would do that, because they have skill sets, we, we don't. But uh, yeah, we're maintaining contact with them and doing everything we can, so. Okay, I'll move on uh from those numbers and I just wanted to, i- it's fine to talk about crime and what's going on. But I, I wanted to touch just a little bit about what do the police officers do. Uh, in the city of Hillsborough, above and beyond trafficking, traffic enforcement and these services renders we talked about, criminal complaints. Uh, we do so much more than that. And, and that's what I wanna hit on just a little bit tonight, so you know what we have. A child passenger safety technician. Uh, basically, these CPS technicians, they educate parents and caregivers on how to install seats. And how to put the child in the seat safely. They also educate the, the family members and public on laws governing the use of child seats. And we partnered up here with the Marion County Health Department uh and save kids, and we'll put on check lanes. Uh, and we'll offer these services to the public for free. You just reach out and we'll be there, and then there's also scheduled events where that stuff's going on. So, and one of those on staff. And that's, just so you understand, that isn't like a five-minute education. I mean, the officer went for a week to learn how to. It's a, it's an intense school. Uh, the lead program, um. You are probably familiar with the fact that we had DARE and we've had DARE for the entire time I've worked here. Uh, we've now just last year switched to the lead program. Um, so we've got a lead instructor and that's law enforcement. Uh, against drugs and violence is what that acronym stands for, and it's. A program to deter the youth from not only drug use and drug-related crimes, but also bullying and violence. So we're not just focusing on substance, we're focusing on things that might cause or spark those mental health problems. So we're finding a way to cross that bridge by teaching this class, so. We're talking about their social and emotional skills, again, that's mental health. And, and we're putting this on in the fifth grade, um. The Sapsy Group, which we're gonna talk about that also. Uh, they are wanting to actually offer this in the junior high school, fifth grade would be elementary. They wanna offer the same program in the junior high school. Now, right now, staff-wise, I don't have the resources to do that. There's a grant that will pay for an officer, his wages, uh, and his training for to become a lead instructor. While he's teaching that ten-week program, but right now, um, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do that for this year, but we have a lead instructor. And basically, we just took our DARE instructor, put him through lead school, and now he's the lead instructor, so. Uh, Alice, uh, that's the name we, or an acronym we've heard for quite a while. Um, that's a program which presents the public with responses should they find themselves in an active shooting situation. Uh, we've taught this class at churches, businesses, courthouses, schools, uh, to school students and school staff. They've all been through it. Um, and basically, anyone in the county who wants this program. And get ahold of the department, we'll figure out how to set something up for them. It's very similar to Run, Hide, Fight, uh, which is something that's been around forever. But I think it's, it's training that everyone should have. You don't have to be in a school setting to need to know what Alice is about. Um, you, whether you're in a restaurant or church facility or whatever, it'd be good to have that training. We've had that instructor.
I do have a question, so is.
Yes.
Does the police department had any conversations with the school board about possibly doing some kind of security measures? I know from the Uvalde shooting, to me, that's something that's near and dear to my heart. I didn't know if you guys have had any conversations.
So, we've talked about, I mean, the school resource officer topic has come up to me out of the board setting. Right in the hallway afterwards, and um, I definitely would support a school resource officer. I don't have an officer right now that we could dedicate to that. That said, we've also fostered uh a new relationship with Tabor College and um. We're looking, I'm visiting with Chris Williams, he has some, some interest uh reaching out to us and not only us, but other. Departments in the county to maybe offer sus- security options for Tabor. And when you think about that, you think about that Hillsborough would like to have an SRO. I'm thinking maybe we could develop something to where we use it at Tabor and we use it at Hillsborough. The school district, oh, let's just say there's been talk about finding money, money other than coming from the city, but, okay, I'll say that. Uh, but if, if, if it would be able to be funded, that could be something that could be investigated. Right now, it's just talk.
Good.
Right now, it's just talk, but I'll tell you this, what we are gonna do uh is we are gonna start going to, as soon as school starts. We're gonna be on campus every day. Both campuses, the elementary and the high school. Uh, every day, an officer's gonna show up and footwalk the campus. At sporadic times, that's gonna be something we're gonna do, so. I mean, the public seeing the mark patrol cars out there, the students seeing an officer at any given time walking the hallways, that helps a little bit. I mean, that's way better than what we used to do, so. Uh, we, we monitor the drop-off points since I worked here, but actually going in and walking around and meeting with people, that's something we're gonna start.
Right.
A little more than we have.
And you mentioned the rise of mental health cases here in, in Hillsborough, I think that's important.
Yeah.
Gives me peace of mind at least. I mean, I don't have kids, but.
Yeah, we wanna develop relationships with these kids, so when we deal with them in a setting, we have that rapport.
Right.
We don't wanna be the bad guy. Anytime we can let someone else be the bad guy, we'll take that, so. Uh, back to our extras here, the Marion County Peace Officer Association, uh, our entire department uh takes part in that network. Uh, basically, what that is, is uh. Is everyone in the county, every law enforcement officer in the county belongs to that, and it's a way for us to have multi-agency training opportunities, so. Uh, right now, one of our officers is the setting president, has been, we've had, we've but had the president role for many, many years, but. We help uh determine what type of training needs are needed within the county from input from officers. Uh, then we organize the training event and then, and then have it somewhere, so we usually host it, so that's, we take an active role in that. Uh, the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, been very active in that for probably fifteen years. The main, the main goal there is uh education. And they find ways to educate people uh a little bit before we're standing outside the car. Or we're knocking on someone's door. If we can prevent the problem, it's way better than dealing with the call. So that's, that's their goal, uh, reduce drug and alcohol use within communities, and it's basically in, uh, the education of the enforcement actions. They help fund uh some enforcement actions, which would be saturation patrol. Like we would have everyone come out and work a Saturday night. And the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, other than our duty officer, will cover the price and the money, or the fuel and everything. So that's, that's their way of doing that, so. We work hand in hand with them. They've also helped us with PBTs, preliminary breath testers, they bought those for us anytime I need. I go to an annual conference and have for twenty-some years, it's about five hundred dollars to go to it, they flip the bill for that, that's drug-related. So, good partnership. Uh, this is new, uh, with the coming of Jeff Sawyer, the new sheriff. Came the development of this multi-jurisdictional drug task force, and. We have a member on the task force, and then we have a member that sits on the board of directors. And basically, what this consists of is we have an officer from each uh city department. So every municipality in the county has a member, uh, an active investigating member. And then the chiefs of that department sits on the board. Um, then there's multiple, I think there's two deputies that take part in it. And the whole thing really is communication. Because if, if we have some drug work going on in town here, and we don't mention it to Peabody in the sheriff's office. And maybe they're dealing with the same thing, we could probably work together, get probable cause, get a warrant and have an arrest a lot quicker. So that's what this is all about. And like I said, that's, that's new and we're super excited to have that. Now that said. Are, one of our officers, the officer that sits on that investigative team, will be leaving. The city of Hillsborough on occasions for investigative reasons. If we're doing warrants or whatever, or someone needs help with surveillance, he'll be leaving Hillsborough to go do that. Under the jurisdiction of the sheriff. Right now, every officer in Marion County i- is a deputy, we've all been deputized, so there's no jurisdiction issues. If we see something out here on the highway and we're, you know, fifty yards outside of city limits, it don't matter, you know, we've got. County line all the way to the next county, so uh there is no jurisdictional issues there. Departmental firearms, range master and armor, um. We're pretty fortunate in, in this category, one, that we're, uh, we've got a range master that's been here for a long time. And loves guns and loves training with guns, loves working with guns, he probably sleeps with guns, I don't know. Uh, but super excited to have him here. Um, he's able to work on everything we get. Uh, so we don't have to send it off for, for maintenance. Uh, he has been able to acquire weapons. Uh, through the federal government, uh, various programs, one of them's the LISO program. Where it's kinda like a grant, but you know, you fill the paperwork out and they see if we fall into what it takes to have these weapons. And so we have really nice weapon systems, weapon systems that generally you wouldn't see in the city of Hillsborough, I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. So we have all been trained on the use of those weapons too, so it's not, a lot of times people think small department, small training. It's actually the opposite, because when you have a small department and there's only five people that needed specialized training. It's a lot easier to train the whole department than Wichita PD, when you got thousands guy that needs the training and you train five. So our department is, in, in all aspects of training, it's always easier to train a smaller department, as long as you can find finance. So, we're good to go with maintenance and everything. He's also a guest instructor at the academy, training the new recruits, been doing that for twenty years. So Hillsborough's represented at KLETC on the firing range uh once a year, so. Uh, the police instructor, actually, we did this this morning at nine forty-five at Tabor College, uh, put on a class for the uh. Resident assistants out there on illicit substance, um, and the ability to identify odors and what to look for, dangers, things like that. We've been doing those classes with Tabor College for years, we've also done it for years at the high school. Um, we'll just continue that relationship, that's nothing new, but recognize that goes on. We're talking to kids beyond. Uh, grade school, so uh, our dare guy was hitting them in elementary, that's great, but I wanted to, we wanted to hit them. When they're in junior high or high school, and we can talk a little bit more serious about what these substances do, so we do that. Um, I look forward to more relationships, more opportunities to teach at Tabor. I appreciate you being here. Um, taser, our department uh has a certified taser instructor, which is nice. Because we can maintain our own taser weapons. Uh, we've had that instructor since two thousand four, which is the very year that we started carrying a taser. Everyone is uh equipped with tasers, plus we have, uh, our part-timers are certified and we have one at the office, so everyone in here has that. That weapon option, um, super important to have that. We had a situation which would have been one of them listed in that first six months where we had a guy reported carrying a weapon. Uh, waving it at people on the street, uh, a couple officers, two of our officers and one sheriff's deputy uh engaged the. The individual, he still got the gun, uh, we've got one of our officers equipped with a rifle, everyone else's pistols, and then we had. Uh, a non-lethal force option, which was the taser. Um, the primary officer on scene gave the directive to the taser. Uh, officer to deploy the taser, he deployed it, boom, we dropped him with the taser, no more problems, no more gunplay, no more nut. Now, that's perfect, that could have ended a lot worse. Uh, and I can tell you, there's been situations that I've been involved in, had, man, I wish we had the taser twenty-five, twenty-eight years ago. Because how we walked out of some calls, I'll never know, but if we had the taser, we could just ended it instantly. So, very happy to have that weapon, I appreciate you guys letting us have that weapon. Uh, emergency vehicle outfit. This is a big deal. Uh, in the last twenty-five years, there's only been one patrol unit. That, that we have not put together in-house. That's a big deal, cause they cost up to five grand to have a professional upfit, outfit to call. So we're buying the equipment and we're installing everything, all the lights and sirens, bells and whistles, cages, radios, antennas, all that, we do in-house. So you're paying basically wages and that's it, so pretty happy to have that, and when something goes wrong. You've got the guy who put it in to go fix it, cause he knows, you know, we don't have to schedule an appointment and wait four months, so. Video and police work, um, fortunate to have a, a, a tech savvy guy. And he's got his hands in anything in our department that's tech-related, does an excellent job. One of the things that he's been a driving force behind is uh cameras. And so we, on the right is our body cam, now we had, we've had body cams for years, that's, that's one of our newer body cams. That hangs in the center of our chest, and anytime we have engagements with the public, um, that thing comes on. Um, it all calls, everything's recorded, so we have body, uh, officer body perspective. And then if you look on the left, there are the one on the far left, that's out the windshield of a patrol unit. So you're seeing the front of the vehicles, it's going down the road, and then the one in the middle is actually in the patrol car facing back. That gets the officer and whoever sits beside him and in the back transport cage. So for evidentiary purposes, for keeping officers on the straight line purposes, we're, we're good here. And that body cam, when you get an officer. We're, we're good here, and that body cam, when you get an officer complaint. The minute you mention, I'll review the body cam, that complaint disappears. I mean, it, it just goes away, because if the person knows they were in the wrong, and they're just trying to get someone in trouble, it's not gonna work. So, now this, uh, community camera network, this is amazing, the, the way this works in Hillsborough. We have a lot of businesses that have their own camera systems, uh, a lot of businesses. And they have literally allowed us direct access to their camera system on the network. So we can go to the office, bring up their business and literally look at all their computers, or excuse me, all their cameras. That'd be bad, but anyway, so, so we can, and I, I made a comment there, we can literally track a criminal element around town, and we've done that. We've done that before, we've had burglaries at a place and we can just follow that criminal from where they broke in. And just see their movements to where they go to another criminal's house, I mean, it's amazing how it works. And that's all because the public understands the importance of, of video and police work and just lets us, lets us have it. So, that's wonderful stuff there. Uh, upgrades to the police department's computer network, that's been a big deal, uh, that. Uh, was part of the grant money that we got to TCT?
TCT.
TCT and the Hillsborough Community Foundation, okay? So, that's where a lot of that hardware that's up in that little cabinet come from. We also have pretty nice monitors, we had a, we've needed upgrades, we were running monitors from Walmart that were ninety bucks. Now we have decent computer systems and very grateful for that grant, because it brought us to where we needed to be computer wise. The patrol unit laptops, uh, that's something that's coming on board, so. Uh, right now, we have one, um, that our task force officer is using. And that is basically gonna allow us to do everything that dispatch can do, we're, we're probably not gonna run. Total, total criminal history, which would be a, a triple I investigation, we probably won't do that, but we're gonna do everything else. So, you know, tags, licenses, uh, local history, you know, whatever we need, we can get it right there in the vehicle. Uh, the, the good thing about that is yes, dispatch and Barney can attest to this, dispatch can give us all that, there's no question. But there's times and time involved, so if we have multiple calls going on, we're dealing with a drug stop. And they're dealing with paramedics and fire. It's a critical situation here, is this guy gonna jump out, shoot at us or what? So we're able to find all that information, so that's where that officer safety thing, uh, helps us out a little bit, great thing there. Those computers have been donated from school. Have been washed out of the system. And we're all scrappers, I'm not gonna lie to you, everyone on police department's about getting freebies. And here's, uh, just a couple pictures of, of them in the unit that, uh, that it's installed in right now, it's on a. It's on a stand that can swing out of the way, there's no airbag intrusion, so, works out pretty good. Active shooter calls, I just wanna touch on this and Blake hit it there for a second. I just wanna let everyone understand that, um, this immediate deployment. Uh, is training that we've all been to and we all continue to train with that locally. Uh, usually that's a peace officer training, we go into all the schools, uh, all the departments around the nation are doing, well, you go into your own schools. And you have an active shooter and you go in and, and eliminate it, so. Uh, with either airsoft or sim guns or whatever, so we're all doing that, I just wanted everyone to know that. There is no waiting, there's never been waiting in Hillsborough. Uh, we were, we were trained for this immediate deployment post Columbine, in fact, Brazel and I went to it post Columbine, I think probably two months after Columbine. That's how long we've had that training. So, big deal, this is what we carry. Um, that Glock nineteen mil, or nine millimeter is, uh, what the city provides us for daily carry. And then above and beyond, we've all purchased our own little Glock twenty-six, which is another pistol that we carry on our best or ankle. And on the right is what you see, that equipment is in the patrol car for responding to those critical calls. That rifle is one of the military surplus, it's an AR fifteen. And then, uh, the short shotgun there, a little Benelli shotgun, or, oh, that one's actually Mossberg, Mossberg shotgun. Ballistic helmet and that bag on the right would be quick clot, extra magazines. The medical stuff in there would be for taking care of us, I didn't want to blow this real quick, this is our new unit, uh, for people who haven't seen it, we put that together this year. Uh, Assistant Chief Brazel's driving this one around. And a couple people asked me, why is not a light bar on that car, there is a reason. Uh, light bars have gone up crazy high in price. So I was able to buy all the lights on that car and install them on that vehicle for about half the price of what a light bar. Would cost us, a light bar that we would normally purchase, and so talk with Matt, Matt's like, if it's lit up and it's safe, do it. And that's what you got, it looks real nice if you haven't seen it behind you. This is what it looks like inside. That console there in the middle, there's radio equipment, lights and sirens, what, the main reason I wanted to show you this is look at the dash on this thing. That these new Ford interceptors, they, they have a dash that looks like something that's being a space machine, there's no frills whatsoever. I mean, you got a tiny little screen there, there is a radio in it, music radio. And climate control, and other than that, that's it, it's just straight up a work vehicle. We get it packed in the back, that cage they're seeing on the right-hand side, they call that a quarter cage, it's supposed to take up one quarter of the. Of the seating space in the vehicle, to be honest with you, I tried to set that cage after I put it in, and I was too claustrophobic, I couldn't do it. The reason we have small cages, though, it restricts movement, people can't hurt themselves or officers for damage equipment, so that's why it's tight. And there's us. Man, I boogied through that mayor as fast as I could, I'm sorry, that took a while.
It's all good.
Any questions, no one's gonna have questions now. I love talking, I love, uh, you know, I love engaging like this, which is probably why, uh, it took forever, but. Thanks.
Don't forget your thing. There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
All right. That was a good report, and, uh, I'm sorry he had to scoot out, but I will say that I. Firmly believe that we have one of the best small-town police forces anywhere, not just in Kansas anywhere. And I think we're very fortunate that, uh, we have the tenure, you know, the long tenure of, uh, of the officers that we do and. You know, clearly they're dedicated to our community and, and, uh, they got a, got a strong tradition of that. Right, Mr. McCarty, ex-chief, McCarty? So, now moving on to some business items. Yeah, let's, let's do that, let's, uh, in the interest of time, let's, let's, uh. Move our memorandum of understanding with Tabor College for the Center for Entrepreneurship. Partnership, up, next. And thank you, David, for being here, we appreciate it very much. So, Matt, if you will, uh, if you will, start us off here.
Yeah, uh, so we talked about this last month when we did our strategic plan update, we've been working with Tabor on agreement for, uh, Center for Entrepreneurship, which is. Uh, focused on developing entrepreneurs, uh, in, in the community, but also at, at students at Tabor and hopefully. Students at lower levels of grades so that we can build a pipeline of entrepreneurship. Our greatest success as a community has been through entrepreneurship, and I feel like that's probably where our focus should be when we talk about economic development as a whole. Uh, and I think that working with Tabor really extends our resources and allows us to. Really, really embrace it in a way that we can do it independently, uh, with, without help, uh, if we were to, you know. Hire, hire a backup position, uh, in economic development, so. Uh, what we've got in front of you is hopefully an envisioned multi-year deal, but we, we've taken it one step at a time, we've done with the, an MOU for one year. Um, and that corresponds with some things that Tabor's doing. Hopefully, we'll have multiple years there, that's the plan, that's the intention, uh, but we're starting with one. Um, and so what we, we talked about there is, uh, the city would basically grant or, or give Tabor. Uh, twenty thousand dollars, which is the one mil that we levy for economic development. Uh, and then also five thousand dollars to get the center up and running, there's some capital costs there that need to happen. Uh, in exchange, Tabor will have some open hours for, uh, community members, which we can refer them to. Uh, there's some educational components related to that, um, it integrates into the, to the entrepreneurship program in Tabor. Um, there's lots of elements to that, if you wanna read through all those, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time talking about every one of them, but. I'm excited about it, I think it's a really great opportunity to, to multiply our investment. Uh, and build bridges with Tabor, which I think is really important in, in our community, and I think, uh, the, the process and. And the outcomes of this will be really positive for not only us, but for Tabor and for the greater community, so. Um, that, that's all I have with it, I don't know if Dr. Jansen, if you wanna make some comments to say.
Just make a couple of comments, you covered it really well, man, it's, and just to say that it's a delight that. Matt and Lou have approached us about this, uh, as they hear us talking about the vision for entrepreneurship. We've been doing some things, growing a small. It's getting a little larger entrepreneurship program at the undergraduate level, but wanting to think much beyond that. And in terms of, how can we do this, uh, not just amongst our students in classes, but make it more. Hands-on and real and actually starting companies and including the community in that, and not just restricting it to our students, so. We just received a grant from the USDA, uh, that is a one-year grant as well, that will help us do some things, but. It doesn't cover several of the things that are being proposed in this MOU. Particular, some of the things like with the US Entrepreneurship Center, uh, or, or program through the high school or. Um, uh, the network can, the, uh, the, the loans program and, and a few things like that, that they're not covering, so. Uh, I think it makes a lot of sense for us, rather than. Kinda offering some of the same services separately, to just combine them into one place. And, and one of the things I'll note as well is we're gonna start with. Uh, at least a temporary facility for this year, for maybe a couple of years, the. Old welcome center there on D Street is the plan, and that's got good visibility. And I think that, uh, the community would see that as something that's accessible, it's not deep in the heart of the camp, Tabor campus, it's, it's right on the edge, it's got parking right there. So hopefully something that people who are thinking about starting a company or wanting to grow their companies and feel comfortable, just popping in there and, uh. Finding out more about our services that we don't.
That would be one comment I'd have, is how do we get that out there as messaging? That it is open, cuz you could think of it as Tabor, oh, that's Tabor's entrepreneurial. Center, right, instead of something that the community can, right, that is, that the community can stop in and ask about.
Yeah, and I think that's a really important question, is how do we, how do we advertise it, how do we market it? And that's where we have the advantage of having the USDA grant, which has some marketing budget in it. I don't necessarily see this money as being used for, uh. Putting ads in the paper and, and, uh, billboards or, uh, or whatever it may be, but we can do some of those things because of the USDA grant. And so if that goes away in the future, we might wanna talk about, um, what kind of money we need to spend, you know, uh.
Well, that's probably the most important in this first year or two, anyway.
That's right, once it gets established, people will know about it, pretty well, but we'll wanna market and advertise workshops and, and. Some of the programming, the things that we're gonna do, uh, and so there'll be a number of, of one-time or continuing events, uh, you know, come to this. Uh, whatever, uh, small business development workshop, or we've got this guest speaker who's coming in, uh. Come learn QuickBooks or, or whatever it may be, and we'll wanna advertise those things regularly. And if, and maybe there, we haven't explored this, you know, maybe there are ways that we can't. Partner in how that gets advertised through subsidy resources, Facebook or social media or your website. We'll certainly do it on our website.
And, uh, we're certainly not gonna be afraid to refer people, I, I could probably refer. Half a dozen people tomorrow, so, they just, they, you know, people come in with ideas and. They wanna start things, some, some are completely unrealistic and some could have some legs, um, but you know, we'll refer that over to. To the center, uh, because they have a lot more expertise in developing those things than we do. Um, and yeah, I think that we'll, we'll have a lot of that too, so there, there won't be any shortage of referrals.
And then we'll be referring them right back to the city for filing forms and, and business licenses, things like that, so, there'll be some going back.
As a Tabor grad, um, myself, personally, I've always wanted to see something like this with the city and the college. So I'm, I'm super excited for this. I think it, it's good to have both the college and the city working together, especially with entrepreneurship, as we talk about growing the city, I think it's really important.
So, a question for you, Matt, you've been kind of on the edge of the economic development for a while now, having to lead it. That ten hours a week is more than sufficient for what you see.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, and that, that, you know, we're talking about a minimum ten hour a week thing, uh, we're working through. What those pieces will be, I'm working with the, the person in charge or that is envisioned to be in charge of that. We've, we've had a lot of conversation about how, how this is all gonna work and kinda how that works, uh, I, yeah, I think that'll be sufficient to start with. Um, you know, if, if it's not, we can figure out something else with that, so.
That's, I mean, one thing that went through my mind, like when Countryside was working through some of the things they had, they probably had more than ten hours.
Oh, right, yeah.
During one section, but then you wouldn't necessarily have ten hours every week.
Right, 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 well, and I would say that, you know, we're not, we're not giving every economic development function over to the Center for Entrepreneurship. Um, there's still things that we're gonna have to do, we have to originate, you know, some loan things and there's. Working with HTC and, and the marketing of our properties and things like that. Um.
Some of what I was thinking would still.
Yeah, it would still fall under what we do, you know, we're not doing industrial revenue bonds every day, so, um, it could be something that, you know, comes along every once in a while, but. Um, we still plan on holding some of the functions for economic development, we just see. Uh, this partnership with Tabor is being one of the core things that we wanna do and expand our ability to do it, so.
I would say that, um, this is, this is really, in, in some respects, just kind of. The first thing that we have in mind, you know, in, in terms of cooperating and collaborating with Tabor, but. Really, the overarching piece for me is, is creating a. Center for Educational and Training Excellence in Hillsborough. That's, you know, head and shoulders above, uh. What's offered anywhere around us, and, and I think when we start seeing that reputation being built, this, this being the first step of that, but. I mean, we're talking about a building trade school, we're talking about, uh, uh, childcare and, and, and those kind of things that all tie in again. And I just feel so fortunate that we went through that strategic planning process, because it's a lot easier to coalesce all this stuff around that plan. When you know the direction you wanna go, and then you start seeing how all these pieces are gonna fit. And again, small communities, no one can do anything by themselves. It's got to be cooperation, it's got to be collaboration, it's got to be people pulling. Together and in the same direction. And you know, we've proven in this community that we can do it. And you know, the, the collaboration that Tabor enjoys with USD four-ten is a shining. Example for me of what that looks like and how it benefits our community, so, you know. I, I couldn't be more excited about it, and it's just well past time for, for us as a city to, to engage. You know, with this asset that we've had sitting right here in the middle of our community for so long, you know, we really haven't. Maximized the, the, the value of that asset for the community, I mean, and, and, uh, so. It's gonna benefit Tabor, it's gonna benefit the city of Hillsborough, but most importantly, it's gonna benefit all the people that touch those. Touch this center, this entrepreneurship center, and you know, whether they ultimately end up establishing a business here in Hillsborough. Or somewhere else, you know, the goal has been met that we're helping to. Create a rising tide that lifts all boats, so. That's my view of it, so, I'm hopeful that, uh, that the council will, uh, be in support of, of the efforts that we've made to this point. And that said, I would accept a motion to approve the, uh. Memorandum of Understanding and the Financial Commitment attached thereto and authorize the mayor to sign.
Move, I'll second it.
Councilman Driggers moves, councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Couldn't be more excited.
Thank you very much, I am very excited as well, uh, this relationship that we have is very strong. And perhaps stronger than it's ever been, um, between Tabor and Hillsborough, uh, it's just a great shining example of that. Cooperation that we have, so, it's gonna be fun, it's gonna be fun to see what, what companies get started.
Let's do it.
And I'm looking forward to meeting some new students tomorrow morning.
Yes, they are coming.
With Tabor a little differently than maybe we have in the past, and we prepared. Welcome to Hillsborough, uh, bags and, and, uh, we're going to be handing those out and meeting new students as they come in. There's gonna be opportunities for us, I understand, to visit with parents. Uh, talk to students in a variety of, of things, and then, uh. Most importantly, on the, uh, thirteenth, Saturday, the thirteenth, we're having a, uh, welcome back party, which is. The Tabor part of it's gonna primarily take. We're having a welcome back party, which is the Tabor part of it's going to primarily take place here on Grand Street. But there's also a cruise night and a movie night that that all the students will be invited down to this part of their.
Orientation for new students.
Could be a little culture shock for some of your students.
Did I hear there's going to be a dump tank too?
Yeah, I heard I heard.
Yeah, well. Yeah, there may be somebody you know in that dump tank.
He may be, maybe you want to be in the dump tank. It would be open to you, Blake.
Supposed to be hot anyways.
Yeah, it might not be too bad of a deal.
So President Jansen, thank you for coming. And then if you have other things you need to get to, why?
I will go eat dinner. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you all.
So now to the more. I'm I was going to say unpleasant, but I don't know that it's it's just a necessary. Thing we have to deal with, and that is ordinance thirteen fifty six, setting trash and recycling rates, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is the after discussion we had last week. This is the ordinance that would make those changes. We didn't modify it slightly and discussing it with our. This is going to sound weird and psychological, but in discussing with our our billing folks, they we talked about fourteen sixty six, but they encourage. Increase that to fourteen seventy five because it's easier for people to wrap their brains around fourteen seventy five. I have like a quarter dollar versus an oddball number at fourteen sixty six. Um, we've always had it at kind of these intervals where it's a quarter more even, I guess. I don't know. So it is a slight change. Um, you know, we could obviously make that alter that back. That's something we wanted to do. But that was that was their recommendation and their their impact on that. So. Uh, we also made the recycling second cart for cycling fifty percent off for the second cart, as we mentioned in the meeting, we talked about that. Um, and then we've kind of moved that structure for. Uh, recycling from the from the pay, you know, the the normal two fifty three, which everyone pays a surcharge. Uh, we've changed that to reflect a different kind of commercial rate for people that have larger dumpsters and have more pickups. Which I think is much more fair than kind of what we've got right now. So. Uh, we did add a little bit of language on dumpster rentals, which we talked about in the meeting, uh, just to kind of match some of that up. Uh, to what we've what we've been wanting to practice on that. We do have some people who. Uh, take dumpsters and then either don't take the dump. And so right now we can't charge them for anything or they hold on to the dumpsters for multiple weeks at a time. And that creates problems for us too. So we've got a two week limit with the ability to extend that if we need to, but that's at our discretion. Uh, and then we also updated the ordinance to reflect our bulky item pickup stuff. Uh, which really wasn't really more of a policy of ours, but we put that into the ordinance. So that's actually part of the code. Um, so the how this proposed change would work, uh, with the estimate there is fifty four thousand four hundred additional revenue. Uh, which is just slightly more than what we talked about last week because of that change. Um, should be sufficient to cover escalating costs. Again, we have a lot of, we've spent a lot on fuel this year. Um, and also equipment maintenance. And so this would also put us in a position where we can make a investment in secondary residential here. Based on kind of how the publication works, if you guys were to approve this, uh, you know, we have to publish it. We have to fix the back end of our billing system to reflect the rate changes. Uh, and then we don't usually make any change that affects somebody in the milling of billing, middle of a billing cycle. So the first time somebody would see this would be actually November first, where we send out bills in November. Uh, your November first bill is actually your service from the middle of September to the middle of October. So. That gets a little confusing for people too, but November first is when you can see that. So. Those are the proposed rates. If you have any questions about it, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve or adopt ordinance thirteen fifty six and authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
That's right.
Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none will pull the council, Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman by.
Yes.
Hey, motion carries. The ordinance thirteen fifty six is approved and the mayor will sign. We now need to consider setting a public hearing on the KPWSOF. Application, and I'm not going to try to make a word out of that acronym there.
That's that's a mouthful. Alphabet soup. Uh, yeah, that's the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund. That's the one point one million dollars in forgivable loan that. Uh, KVHE is tentatively agreed to provide us for our emerging contaminant issue. Uh, as part of that process, we have to set a public hearing so that. Um, anyone from public can come in and and lodge any opinion about how that loan typically for a loan, you know, there's there's a repay pay period, but the census is forgivable. It's more like a grant. Uh, so citizens have to have an opportunity to come in and make comment on that. Um, and so what they've requested, what EBH's request is that we set that public hearing for September sixth at six thirty PM. Uh, I will say that that's going to be a very busy night for public hearings for us because we have our budget hearing that night, our revenue neutral hearing that night. And we'll also have two code enforcement hearings that night. So if you're not going to be there, I really need to know as far in advance as possible because. We've got a lot of stuff like scheduled for that evening, um, including this, if that's something you would like to do.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to set a public hearing on the KPWSLF loan application for September sixth at six thirty PM. Councilman by moves. Is there a second? Councilman Driggers seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're into discussion items. When is it that the. County would do, we don't actually get the actual bill. What the mill levy really is until.
They complete their abstract in November. So. That's why it's kind of a guessing game.
Estimate.
And they can actually change your mill levy. To accommodate the the amount that you've set. So. That's always why it's a bit of a guessing game sometimes with this budgeting. So.
Well, first item up for discussion is the two thousand twenty three budget review, Mr. Styles.
So I'm not going to go through the whole thing. Um, I certainly will be happy to do that if you want me to. Uh, it hasn't changed much. Talked about it at the previous time in the beginning of July. Uh, I also have the. Full line item budget. If you want to go through that at some point, if we want to do that, I'd really suggest we set up a. Uh, budget. Workshop to do that because it gets to be a little bit complicated. One of the things I wanted to talk about was the Family Aquatic Center. That was was a conversation we had at the last meeting. Uh, so what we have on that, uh, the bonds for the pool and get paid off in two thousand twenty three. Um, and so. What that that money, that revenue that's set in there, it comes from the sales tax. Uh, in the debt service plan that Greg Barnburg put together for us a couple of years ago, we still use some of that funds until we get past. Uh, what I would describe as kind of a balloon arrangement with some of our other debt. Uh, that was set up, uh, when we refinanced in two thousand nineteen. So. Really, we're not clear of using that that fund from the the pool until twenty twenty six. Uh, so there's a little bit of an overlap there. We have to kind of keep that in check. Uh, there isn't an abundance in that fund right now. So what I did, uh, in the in the budget document, I put in. Three hundred thousand dollars of capital improvements, uh, which gives you budget authority in that fund if you want to use it. For capital improvements. However, uh, I would probably recommend that we not do that. We just have it allocated and have the authority to just in case. Um, that money could be used for other things too. It could be used to improve the. In in a pinch, you could actually reallocate that money to the general fund or wherever else you needed to. Uh, to to bolster those accounts. I don't think you're going to need to. But you know, it's a situation where you want to give yourself the authority to do some of those things if you have to. So. That is kind of how we budgeted that. Uh, the state budget form. Is kind of an oddball form, as the mayor was saying, you know, the state county won't finalize its abstract until November. And so at any point after that, they can make adjustments to your to your mill levy. Uh, you're sort of at the mercy of them. The state budget form makes you balance to zero, which is a little bit weird too. Uh, so there's some things that kind of come out of there that don't necessarily make sense on the face of it. More than happy to explain them, but you have to think about it as it's trying to balance to zero and that's kind of how it sets itself. Uh, a lot of it's automated. Again, it's probably easier to look at. Uh, you know, if you really wanted to get into what we spend on different items, we can really get into the line item budget. Uh, that said, I don't like to argue over toilet paper and pencils. We can, if you want to, more than happy to, but uh, I don't know that that's very helpful for anybody to do that. So. Um, if you have questions about it, more than happy to answer them now. If you want to set up a budget workshop, we'd be happy to do that at the end of August. Otherwise, it's pretty much as is.
So if you wouldn't mind taking us through a little bit of mill. Levy history.
Sure.
So if you could maybe pull up the last uh, three years, mill levies.
I can sure do that.
Even what you described with the county and how that can change. It hasn't changed on us too much over the years, has it? It's been.
Yeah, it has. Um, in two thousand twenty or two thousand nineteen. Uh, the estimate that the county gave us was about a million dollars off of what it actually ended up being, uh, which created some interesting issues. But yeah, so that it it can be off, it can. Um, I don't think it's going to be recently. Recent history doesn't really suggest that, but. Um, it can be. You don't usually get too much like that. That was a little bit odd in any experience I've seen in the past. So. So yeah, uh, in two thousand and twenty one, uh, mill levy was forty six point two six nine.
That was in twenty twenty.
Twenty one. Yeah, that's what we had in twenty twenty one. Uh, and that was one of the situations where I think that the end of the day, the the assessed valuation came in a little different than what they anticipated there too. Last year, it's in twenty twenty two. We were at forty three point four three four, so a reduction of not quite form, uh, not quite three mills. And this year we're anticipating being at forty three point six five. It's not a whole lot of change from that either. Uh, if you want me to go back further.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Uh, you know, the goal that that I think we've tried to maintain is trying to keep the the mill levy flat. As flat as we can or even or even a little bit lower. And I think. In this last year, we've seen some pretty extraordinary. Cost increases from from supply chain issues and and also. Inflation. Thank you. And so, you know, for myself, I think that having a mill levy that we estimated forty three point six five. As opposed to this last year, forty three point four three four and still getting done all the things. We plan to get done and all the projects and and different things. I think that's not a bad place to be. You know, I never want to intentionally try to go out and raise taxes, but at the same time, you know, this is about as. Flat. I think we could spend the time, but but again, I don't know that that we would see the value from that time spent. Trying to dissect this budget. Line item by line item. So. That's just my my opinion. I don't know. How the rest of you feel.
Okay.
No comments. Okay.
Fair enough.
So am I to assume that that's agreement or just no comment?
It's agreement.
It's agreement.
Okay. All right. So. At this point, would it be, uh, is there any action we need to take on this?
No, we're pretty well set. We've notified the clerks that we're going to exceed the revenue mutual rate and we'll publish the. Uh, budget hearing information that will actually start next week. So we're we're on target to to adopt as is unless something changes. Again, once you publish, you can't, you it sets the mill levy. You can go down, you cannot go up. As of right now, I feel like we're pretty good shape. So.
Very good. All right, let's move on to a rate for BOD and TSS.
Exciting chemistry.
Bod to.
Yes, exactly. So I I hope you all remember your chemistry lesson we talked about earlier this year. Um, so sewer ordinance, we specifically have some some things in there about BOD, which is. Biological oxygen demand. Uh, that's the stuff, the nasty stuff that gets into the sewer system that requires um, things like our aerators to break down. Um, you know, we've got several people who could potentially be. Providing that to us. Uh, we know Barkman Honey, we've talked to them. We're actually in the middle, I think, close to finishing a negotiation with them. On uh, the aerator project and and talking with them about how that's going to get paid for. Uh, but there are other opportunities, I think. We we've we've got this ordinance that we've had in place for forever, a long time. That we've just never enforced. Uh, and one of the reasons why is the way it's written currently, it doesn't have anything specifically layered on on what you would charge for these type of things. So it technically right now, it's the city, uh, the city superintendent, which would be Morgan Marler, who's our sewer superintendent. Pretty wide latitude to do kind of what she needs to do to do that, uh, and could charge. You know, whatever rate that she felt was appropriate, which I don't know. I don't really think she wants to do, and I don't think that we really want to as a council either. Um, so we've got these limits that are in there about BOD. And TSS is total suspended solids. Those are two of the things that we get measured on from KVHE owner permitting. And so, you know, we've got these limits, three hundred and fifty parts per million of suspended solids, um, three hundred parts of BOD. We can kind of weigh those things as they come through the system. Uh, one of the things we haven't really done is monitor that. We've we've got a lot of data from Barkman Honey because they used to take their their honey waste down to us, uh, at the old old plant and the old tank. Uh, and so we've got data on that. So we kind of know what they're looking at, but we don't know what other people have been doing. Um, and so we asked our wastewater engineer to to calculate what it costs to break down one of those things. And so what they've come out with is twenty four cents per pound. Of BOD. Um, that takes into account staff time, you know, any kind of chemical addition we have to do, running it through the system, the aeration. All those factors get put into that. So that's what he calculated out is what that was. Um, so we went out and looked at kind of what other people are charging for those types of things, and it's actually pretty similar. Um, Wichita is kind of the exception as far as the rate limits. They're actually a little bit lower. But everybody else is pretty well has the same, you know, three hundred. Uh, BOD and and three fifty on the suspended solids. Uh, that was actually a recommendation. There's nothing technically governing that other than the Clean Water and Air Act. That's not specific. It was just advice given by KVHE uh, back in. The nineties. And so it pretty well, everybody adopted it. I think they tied some funding to that. And so that's probably why I created this. So we kind of looked through the list. We went and pulled some comparables for you so you could take a look at kind of what everybody else is charging. Um, you know, Moundridge, Simron are kind of on the lower end. Uh, we would fall after them. Johnson County, Wichita, Harrington, McPherson, uh, even City Marion, they charge fifty cents per pound. Um, I feel like we're. Based on our calculations, we're at twenty four cents. We feel pretty good about that being accurate. So. You know, how we, in order to put that rate in, you'd have to do an ordinance change, but one of the other things you have to look at is testing protocol. Like, how do we? How do we even enforce this? Um, and so what we would do, we've got some language there about how we would draw samples and randomize those samples and then apply. Uh, whatever we found in that to the operational days of a facility. You know, it's pretty simple for a couple of places because we can get into a manhole. We know that they're the only person dumping into. And then, you know, do the math from there. If there are other places in town, um. Restaurants with grease traps, uh, some automotive places can be that way. Uh, funeral homes was one I didn't think of that could potentially have BOD in in the system. Uh, if there are other places like that, that we we can't get, you know, a real accurate reading from just the manhole, then we could look at potentially some kind of monitoring station with them. Some kinda monitoring station with them, or work out a testing protocol with the the individual business. Um, so, you know, what we've got or what we were proposed is to have uh a testing protocol where we work that out. And be able to, you know, what what it does say in the ordinance now is that you can charge those tests back to the individual, uh, individual person doing that. And so we would have, we wanna keep some sort of testing protocol in there. Uh, we wanna be able to negotiate that kinda with the person, but at the same time, we have the regulatory authority to to make them do that. Uh, I think it is in our best interest to to monitor this better and to to actually enforce the ordinance that we have. I've been doing that for the past twenty-seven years, um, and I think that. To our detriment, uh, that's been to our detriment, cuz we have a consent consent decree from KDHE. Right now, uh, that we have a couple more years to to accommodate with, but they've set new levels for ammonia, uh, total dissolved solids, total suspended solids. Uh, in our wastewater legumes, so we're gonna be under those regulations in the next two years. So we really ought to step up and and be able to monitor that, or else we're gonna get fined from KDHE. That won't be pleasant for anybody either, um, so. What we're talking about at this point, I, you know, I don't know what the fiscal impact, the we we have a ballpark idea of what Barkman has done in the past. We don't really know what they're doing right now, uh, they're gonna be the biggest, they're gonna be the biggest contributor, we just know that based on historic data. Uh, but again, we're also looking at other other businesses as well, so. Those grease traps, those funeral homes, the, you know, all those other places that could potentially be uh doing, so.
I would assume we'll let these businesses know.
Oh, yeah, 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 we wouldn't be just dropping in and, you know, charge for that, but. We'd wanna be able to work that out and and come to a reasonable agreement on the testing protocol, um, cuz I want them to feel like this is accurate as well. Uh, there's also an opportunity for them to, uh, if they don't feel like it's accurate, to do their own testing. And then we can check that with the third party independent tester too, so we've got a few options in there, we don't wanna just drop it on somebody. Um, there's, this is just a discussion item, I know it's a lot of, it's a lot of technical information. But it's something we need to think about, uh, as we move forward.
So what I'm hearing you say is that we have an ordinance that we haven't enforced, and we really don't have a rate structure. Or testing protocols to support that rate structure. And we are one of the few communities our size that we're aware of that that this is the case.
Yeah, especially with in the industrial base that we have, we're coming on you, we're outlier in that.
Well, it's seems to me like we probably better figure it out before KDHE figures it out for us. With a responding, with a corresponding price tag.
Dislike the most is how you say it's not defined now, so that, you know, if you try to. Yeah, it could be, either way, it could be enforced too aggressively or.
Yeah. Yeah, the the superintendent in the existing ordinance has a lot of lenient, a lot of leeway and how that gets done, and I. I'm not com- I don't, she's not comfortable with that, I tell you that. So this would zero that in a little bit, give us some some actual structure.
So is it the council's wishes that we uh proceed forward on something that we can uh. Present to the council as in terms of a new ordinance. But the supporting.
Okay.
That's your direction?
Yep, we'll bring you something, we've actually got a draft ordinance that Andrew's done already, so we'll review that, tweak it, bring it to you.
Very good. And then, uh, within the ordinance, it covers the the testing, some of the maybe overall overarching. Uh, methodology for testing and so forth.
It does, I mean, there's still, you know, there's still some leeway on the superintendent's part, um, on how on how they deal with things, but. Uh, as Matt pointed out, one of the ways you try to. Counterbalance that is with the company's ability, if they've got an issue to get an independent test and, you know, try to work it out with the city, so there's, yeah.
I wanna, you know, the the only thing I would say is, it's good, in my opinion, it's got to have. A way for these companies to to be part of the process, and uh, you know, we can't. You know, we're sitting here talking about KDHE and thinking that, you know, about getting something shoved down our throat. Well, that may be how other people operate, but that's not how we, the city of Hillsborough needs to operate, and so. I just wanna make sure we, that the businesses are well covered in terms of their ability to participate in the process and. And have, you know, is there a, is there a um, a method for, um. If you if you're not, if you're not in agreement with it, is there some escalation opportunity in the ordinance that that they could escalate it to the council?
Sure, if it exactly set up.
We don't have necessarily have an appeal right beyond the ability to, I mean, beyond the ability to get your own independent test to prove that. You know, the one that the city has done.
Well, I I again, I guess I don't, what I don't wanna do is I don't wanna put the final, final authority in 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 one.
Yeah.
In one person's hand, I think it should be with the governing body. So if we can make sure that we've got that something to that effect in there, I would appreciate it.
They're talking about more on appeal.
Yeah. Yeah, if you're not satisfied with what the superintendent says, or, you know, the result of the testing and and all of this, and. I think it should be a governing body decision ultimately, you know, how we how we resolve it.
Yeah.
That makes sense? I know Andrew maybe. You're like, I'm not sure.
We said, we said a, we said a excess bond rate of twenty-four cents. And we've done a test. And it says the excess is this number, the ordinance is gonna say we fly, you know, we apply the rate to it. So I I I'm not, I totally understand what you're saying. I mean, from his standpoint of, a aside from. Uh, the company saying, okay, I've got an independent test that has a different number, whatever it might be, and it's saying, so we think it should be calculated on this basis. I don't know what they would come to the council, and I don't know, you, you tell me if you want the council to to. I mean, they'll have to waive the ordinance in that regard.
I understand that too, but uh, but uh, you know, this council has made decisions, you know, that uh, that have been uh. In lieu of, you know. You know, for for constituent reasons or political reasons, I don't know how you wanna define it, but. You know, we are the people's body, and we're here to do their, you know, to do. To look after them as well as look after the city as a whole, and that's the balancing act, right? So, anyway, I th- I think we're, I think we're fine, I think we're fine, I just, I just wanted that out, that's all. Anything else on that subject? Okay, we'll now move into your uh city administrative report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, uh, pretty short this week, since we just happened last week, um, sales tax distribution for June, um. Last year, it was the second highest month of the year this year, it's not quite that, uh, but we're nearly identical to what we had last year. Uh, we're about twenty-two percent above last year, which was our best year on today, and thirty-five percent above the rolling five-year average, so. I'm looking, you know, if everything kinda continues as it is, we'll be at about a million dollars in sales taxes. That's, it's pretty high. Uh, compost grant, we talked about that back in uh May, we did not receive it, they did give us some good feedback though. Um, so maybe able to get that in another cycle. Uh, the mayor mentioned the welcome back packs, uh, or the welcome back celebration thing we're doing there, so. CVB uh is is doing welcome bags for students on the move-in day, so that's the tomorrow. And then uh Friday and the next, next week on Friday, uh, we're also participating in some orientation sessions uh for parents and for students. And uh, the police department's gonna be participating in those too, which I think is important, that's something we've never done before, so that'll be fun, uh, to get out there and do that. And then on the twelfth, we're gonna have the the cruise night and the movie night, and we're also gonna have a welcome back black party out in front here. Uh, dunk tank, as Mr. By has mentioned, uh, and also the fire department's gonna be setting up, they have some uh water game things they do. Uh, or, you know, college students can get on the end of a fire hose, which I'm. Kinda terrified about, but uh, should be interesting to see. Uh, and then we're also having like a a mini, I don't know, like a job fair, but. An opportunity for businesses to come out and set up tables if they wanna recruit for student workers, or if they just wanna introduce their business to students, there's an opportunity for that. I got two signed up for that already, so we'll get some more on that, should be a good time, it'll be something new and. Um, it's part of our intentional efforts to engage students from Tabor, so it's really exciting about that. Uh, comp plan, that's a big boring, long process too, uh, but planning commission started that last week, or, yeah, last week. Uh, state law requires that that be updated regularly, and actually, I think it says every year that they're supposed to look at that, that has not been happening. Which is not to, don't, not not to push the panic button, uh, that happens like everywhere, so that's not a typical, but. Uh, we're gonna be doing some work to to put that together, uh, there's gonna be some community engagement pieces to that, that we're gonna need. Uh, specifically on issues like transportation and parks and recreation, which also works in our strategic plan, so. Uh, those two are really directly tied together, and so this, this will be good for that process, there's a lot of uh technical parts, there's nine sections in a. Uh, account plan, and they're all uh pretty technical in some ways. Uh, it really defines land use, it's probably the biggest thing that a comp plan does, um, and such sets up how you can. Control, you know, how how development works in the city. Uh, again, there's strategic plan elements and community engagement pieces to that too, I'm anticipating this is gonna be a year-long process. Um, just because that body meets once a month and it, there's a lot of work involved, so. Um, but we're gonna do it in-house and not hire somebody to help with that, because if you hire somebody, it's. Minimum probably thirty thousand dollars walking out the door, which is ridiculous. As someone who used to do them at Wichita State, uh, that that's too much money to pay for that, so we're not gonna do that, we're gonna do it in-house. Um, I gotta attach the evaluation forms, we had mentioned that, uh, when we talked about employee raises, so those are in there and. Kinda begun doing that, uh, department heads did some work collaboratively to review those forms, we felt pretty good about them at the end of the day. Uh, we're targeting to have all the employees have evaluations done by the end of August to give us a baseline. And then when we go into doing, uh, looking at merit bonuses mid-year, which is in the budget, um, they're gonna have an opportunity to be re- redone again. Uh, and then I've got my evaluation, uh, we're a little past that, but it's time to do that again too, and I sent you out a copy of the link. Uh, before the meeting tonight, uh, and I also sent you a copy of what the the employees did the evaluation for me. Uh, so you have what their feedback was too, so hoping to get that and. Hopefully, if we get that done, we can do an executive session next next meeting and and get that knocked out, so that's all I had.
Question on the copy you sent us.
Yeah.
From the employees, I noticed I didn't see any of their particular comments, I'd saw that there were comments made, but I didn't see the comments.
I think it's at the bottom, but yeah.
I I thought I scrolled to the end.
I will look at that again, cuz sometimes that report doesn't turn off for exactly correctly, so, okay, I will get that to you then.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Comments? Um, again, I see no members of the public online, nor do I see any present in the room. So we will dispense with the second public comment opportunity and move to council comments, Council by.
Uh, the only thing I have is I'll be gone the last week of uh December, I'll be in Florida, so if we do any meetings, I can do it remote, I just.
Well, typically, we don't do anything that last week unless it's a budget reconciliation.
I I just let you know way ahead of time, so that way. Well, I just, I just found out about it on Sunday, so I just wanted to make sure.
Anything else?
Is it?
Councilman McCarty?
Well, I'll be gone, watching a really good baseball team, we're in Atlanta, but I'm on missing it.
Councilman Driggers.
No comments for me.
Hey, is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Yeah, on Sunday.